To order. I see, the first, first thing on the agenda is a proposed ordinance number one. From Cosmo, Councilmember Cosmo Testa. Ordinance amending the composition of the Bureau of Fire.
Sure, so obviously this hasn't been introduced to the floor yet. So one of the first things I'd like to do, once we get to that component, is introduce it into committee and go over that in detail, once we get there at a further, at a future committee meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Scott, would you like to talk about it, or you want to wait until we go into committee?
When would be appropriate time to be?
It would probably be at a committee meeting.
Okay, well, I'll request a committee meeting.
We'll go around if you'd like to say something about it, or we're certainly going to have a committee meeting.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to say something about it.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, it's his turn to talk. And if we go through all the legislation, and then if we're done, we can talk about it. But, we're going to go around anyways.
Well, that's going to be at seven. It would be at seven. Yeah, so it's one, just move through the packet, and then he could speak.
Yeah, Chief, usually go to the roundtable, so.
If that's at seven.
It's at seven?
It's at seven. So we'll go through the packet, and then you want us to make your case.
Technically, according to the rules, you can't discuss legislation until it's introduced. It's just here, and you're better off there.
Yeah, so at the roundtable, you shouldn't discuss it either.
Sure.
Okay, we got that clear?
Yeah.
Excuse me. Okay, the second, second one is from Nick Brynbecker, the Deputy City Engineer. Would you like to speak on this, Nick?
No, this is just updating the rules, or guidelines, I guess, under Planning Board, and how we're addressing MS four regulations moving forward, which are new regulations imposed by the DEC and the EPA. This is just so everybody's in compliance, and, yeah, that's all I can say about it.
So does anything appear to be new?
No, I think it was just kind of clarifying how planning works with us already, just maybe changing some words or something in there. Wasn't anything intrusive?
If I could jump in, the zoning ordinance right now basically allows at the option of the Planning Board to consult with the Engineering Department. What, and it uses the word "may" with the zoning ordinance. What we're suggesting is that the word "may" be changed to "shall," so it's no longer optional, it's required, and that'll be enough to satisfy EPA that the city's complying with their new MS four requirements.
Brian, the only question I have is this ordinance is already in existence, so two dash two nine dash three one five is already inside the code?
Yes.
Okay, so you're, you've got to change that. The only, the only thing that I'm going to say is it's got to be an ordinance amending section two dash three nine dash three one five, because you're not adding to it, you're amending it. It's already in existence. So, that would be the only thing that I would say. Now, the Department of Public Works isn't, isn't involved in that, so wouldn't be the DPW Commissioner, or?
Yeah, everybody, everybody's involved in it in some way.
So then why is the Department of Public Works?
As far as planning goes, maybe only storm sewers.
Well, I mean, I think that they, the real reason why they were included in is because you should know if there's work going on.
There was a list that we got of what they wanted us to have on a daily, weekly basis of what we do. Where we keep our saw, when we plow, when we street clean, when we pick up green waste, when we sweep. There's this, there's a numerous amount of things that they needed, and we, we went through this and gave them what they wanted, and they're, I guess, we're going.
They are affected by the MS four, but not in the planning.
In the secret process, but they should still know if there's a project going on. I mean, they do other projects and things like that, so that was the whole reason why that they were included in the consultant part from the beginning.
Joe, go ahead.
So, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, this has to do with the law about the, the new law that's in effect, where we can't sell houses and all this stuff?
No.
You know? Nothing to do with that.
No, EPA, stormwater, storm sewer separation.
Okay.
Personally, and just because the DPW and Parks Department does deal with it, they still should be a part of it. So the only thing that I would say is just change from, due to ordinance amending section two dash two nine dash three one five, you, you change it from "may" to "shall," okay? And then it's a, still should say consult with Department of Public Works, the City Engineer, the Commissioner of Codes, the Storm Water Management Officer, and the city's Public Safety Departments. I mean, to me, it would make sense if the Department of Public Works, if the Department of Public Safety's in there, then the Department of Public Works should be in there. And in addition, they may consult with them as a representative of the state and federal. I mean, what's, what's the, what's the difference in that language? So you might as well just keep it fluent in that, and then.
You mean, is it the, the passage down here at the end?
Yeah, it says, "in addition, they may consult with them," so what's the difference between "may" and "shall"? I mean, it just seems like the language is contradictory of itself, and that's all I'm saying, is just keep it fluent, and then you don't have to worry about who's supposed to be notified and who's not supposed to be notified. Everybody's notified.
Well, "may" is optional, "shall" is required.
Right. But what I'm saying is that you're.
So you think it wants to be required both by?
Yeah, because what, here's my whole thing, you're, you're, you're notifying, notifying in a mandatory term that the Department of Public Safety should be notified, but not the Department of Public Works, who's actually involved in some of that stuff, whether it's the relation to codes, that's it. And that's just, just for the fluent component of it, because say they don't get notified and they're supposed to, it's really not that big of a deal in the language. So, the only thing that I'm going to say is you change it from ordinance adding, change it to an ordinance amending, and then just keep it, in addition, the board, the board shall consult with the Department of Public Works, the City Engineering, the Commissioner of Codes, the Storm Water Management Officer, and the city's Public Safety Department prior to the issuance of the final approval of any site plan review. And then, that's it. Then, in addition, I guess you could say that the representatives of federal, state, and county agencies, as well as the designated private consultants. So that would be my only amendment that I would, that I would ask the council to consider.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't change the, doesn't change it, it just makes sure that everybody that's in the loop is in the loop.
I also think you should have an even stronger word than "shall." I think "shall" is.
Must? I thought must was, I thought must was the actual word that we used according to our, our city code, but I guess we'll stick with "shall."
Okay, Councilman Beatrice?
Yeah, just a question, Brian. Timeline-wise, did, would this add to the, add time to the current process as it currently stands to consult with the other departments, just to get an idea of, just practical timeline?
No, I mean, on the larger projects, we generally send copies of the plans when we receive the applications to the Engineering Department, and Police and Fire for input. But it's, it's sort of, at my judgment, this, this mandate, if approved by this body, this mandates that every single site plan application would be sent to them, and Public Works as well. So no, I wouldn't say it as.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, we'll go on to the next piece. Proposed Resolution Number Two, Resolution Providing for Public Hearing on a Zoning Amendment, Whereas Utica Common Council Propose Amendments to the Zoning Court Concerning the Site Plan Review Process and Review Requirements by Various City Departments.
Yeah, the, the ordinance that we just talked about needs to be tabled, and this resolution schedules a public hearing that's required by the Code of Ordinances to be held before you can act on the amendment to the zoning ordinance. So you should act on scheduling the public hearing.
Table ordinance, I mean.
Table the ordinance.
Do we have a date for this public hearing, then?
Uh, it should be the first one in, your first meeting in May.
Maybe May seventh, first meeting?
Yeah, because the Planning Board will meet on the seventeenth of this month to do a recommendation to this body.
So we have May seventh on that?
Very good, any other questions? If not, discussion closed, we'll go on. Proposed Ordinance Number Three. It's, it's ordinance adding section two dash twenty-nine, three fifteen of Utica City Court of Ordinances. Is that what we were just talking about?
Yeah.
So this is what we're going to table for the weekend until after the hearing?
Yeah.
And, any other discussions? None? Discussion closed, we'll go on to Proposed Resolution Number Four, A Resolution to Initiate Deliberations of Proposed Universal Public Safety Fee. This is from Councilmember Beatrice, would you like to speak about it?
Yes, so, you guys were all, received my letter that I sent to all of yous, what I plan on doing. So first, I have a resolution here, and I'd like to put this, to bring this to a vote tonight, to get it started, so we can have, you know, the, the accessor, the Controller's office, anybody else who you think, we can amend this, to anybody else who you think we should include, and then just have them start looking at it. And then the next piece is the, is an ordinance that I just want to put in committee. You know, our, our, our rules say we have to have legislation in committee before we can talk about it, and I also, I think I made it very clear to everybody, the hard part with this legislation is to make sure the people that are already paying tax, they need to come up with a way where they're credited back, because we're not trying to charge them, we're trying to charge the people that aren't paying for, you know, taxes. And again, if you guys want to amend any of this, if you don't like the name of it, if you want to add, if you guys want to add another, I know, Sam, who'd you, what'd you say you thought I should add?
I just thought that. I mean, even through the Economic Development Department, that Utica Industrial Development Agencies should be involved.
I, and I.
If that, this was going to go through, maybe that was something that they can negotiate through a non-for-profit to see if there was a universal public safety fee, if we couldn't get through it legislatively on behalf of the council. I, I know, I don't remember when it was, but we asked for, at the time, I think it was Utica, Utica College, I don't remember if we kept responding to their, because it was a hospital, or, I don't remember exactly in detail what it was, but we asked them to, you know, pay a fee, and that's how they did it. I believe it was either through the industrial development agency.
That's what they do, in Utica, that's what they do at one of the colleges.
And that's where the public safety fee, instead of doing the curb tax fee, came from, because that was able to be negotiated based on square footage, so you weren't just putting it, you were able to come up with that formula based on the footage in front of the building and so on and so forth.
And I don't have no problem with doing that, the reason I only said the, the assessor and the controller.
Well, the assessor's office and controller had to be involved.
Right, but they would get a, because, guess what? If they come here and sit with us when we have a meeting, and say, "You're going to make X amount of dollars, but it's going to cost this amount of dollars to implement it," maybe we won't, we won't be able to do it. It's just something that I thought we needed to move forward and try to do something.
Joe, I got one question on this.
Yes.
Now, is this going to go into a special fund that the public safety is used?
Jack, that's.
Is it going to go into a general fund? Because if it goes into the general fund, then it could be used for other things, but we want, you want this specifically to go to public safety? How do we?
No, I don't want, I don't want it to go, I want it to go to a general fund. I want it to go.
You do?
Yeah, I want it to help to defer the property tax to the people, okay?
So you're, it's not specifically.
And that's, the whole point of this is, to get it in committee, we need to have the, we need to have the meeting to discuss all the bits and pieces of it.
All right, good.
So this is, this, the resolution gets the assessor and the controller's office to look at it. Now, when we have a meeting, we call them here, they're going to have some data, okay? So that's why I'd like to pass this tonight to get them started, the resolution, and put the ordinance in committee, is what I'd like to do.
I'm fine with this resolution.
I appreciate you guys' support, okay? Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
So just, Joe, if you could just make the amendment on the floor for the, for the industrial development.
Okay, I let you, and since it's your idea, you can make the, and Joe. Okay? You talk better than me.
Oh, seem a little polite there.
Just figured that out.
Very good. And in, in this discussion, we'll go on to Proposed Ordinance Number Six, it's an E and A transfer. It looks like it's fifteen thousand, four oh seven, twelve.
So, so.
It may be right on there.
I know that this has been going on for quite some time, with the way this transfer looks, and it states for the E and A transfer of twenty-four, twenty-five. We used to get a detailed explanation, what account number it was, where it was coming from, where it was going to, an explanation for the transfer, they had original budget, revised budget with transfer, transfers in, transfers out, expended, encumbered, balance before transfer, if presented, used before, after. So I, I'd like to get a detailed explanation on that, what the original transfer's in, because this was what the Board of Mania transfer used to look like, that the Common Council used to get, and this is what it looks like now. So just to get a little more clarity on that, I would like to hold this one into committee and ask for a more.
I got a clarification, if you want to talk.
No, it's not that, it's not that, but it's got to come to us looking like this. Because even the transfers don't match up, I mean, I get it, but it should give us a detailed, especially if this is clearing up the end-of-the-year funds on the previous year, and it's not on anything that you do, it's just whatever, whoever, whoever presents it to our clerk's office has to clarify it in the way that they used to do before, so that there was a little more understanding to the council.
And if I may, just for the first two, this ES five, that one is the sewer fund, the next two is off-street parking, and I believe the last two is CDBG, is that what you have, Nick?
Yeah.
So, just in case people are wondering.
Sewer fund, that's emergency repair that I told, I spoke about.
Yeah, I'm not worried, I'm not worried about what you're transferring in and out.
Can you give me that?
Yeah, but this is, this is what we used to get, it just makes it a little more detailed and explain, as far as that goes. So just, anybody, it has nothing to do with the actual legislation.
Well, I mean, I printed it so I could.
Yeah, no, but that's what I'm saying, but if we had that on there, it would just, it would just be detailed, and it just, when we were passing it and not double-checking what E and A was doing, we all had that in there so that we could see. So that was just a little more detailed of an explanation on that. That was it, and I meant to say something at the last time, because it's been like that for the last few meetings, and I just wanted, I wanted it clarified when it's transferred down to our clerk's office like that, okay?
So basically, it's more of a paper trail?
Yeah, it just, I mean, it was, doesn't matter who it is, it's just, it's easier to explain, like, what was transferred out, what was originally budgeted, things like that, and for our understanding and purposes, it's just, it's just, we changed it that way, through, to ask the Board of B and A, when they do a transfer like that, to send it to the council, so that it was a little more detailed in its explanation. You get a new budget director, your previous budget director used to do it that way, so just to give him a heads-up that that's how, it should be done when it's sent to the council.
Okay, very good.
That's it, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll close that, and we'll go on to Proposed Resolution Number Seven. It's a resolution requesting New York, New York Assembly Member Mary Ann Bundstein and State Senator Joe Griffo to introduce home roof legislation to amend tax law to authorize the collection of inactive, it's the tax in the city of Utica. I'm not too sure.
So, I mean, this is something that we talked about throughout the entire budget process, is looking at additional ways to generate revenue through the city. I, I support this legislation, because this is just a start, it's not like it's going to be mandated. Obviously, Joe Griffo and Mary, Mary Ann Bundstein, Assemblypeople and Senator have to do the work in order for us to even get this introduced to the, to the Senate and Assembly floor. So this is something that isn't going to happen overnight. The only thing that I'm going to ask to make an amendment on the floor is that, two things, the BEA resolve should read in unity, because one of the BEA resolves say that the mayor and the city of Utica and the Common Council hereby request, and then it says that the Common Council finds. The only thing that I'm going to ask is that we just make an amendment that it reads cohesively throughout the, the route of resolution stating that the mayor and, of the city of Utica and the Common Council, just to know that it's a joint effort amongst each of those whereas's and resolves. But other than that, I have no problem passing this resolution tonight. That's it, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I guess that's it.
If I may, I know, we have the chiefs here, we just discussed in depth four other pieces of legislation that aren't in committee yet, but it just, if I could hear from.
You want to waive your own rules, yeah, you can discuss whatever you like.
Okay, just, I would like to hear from everybody, because we are deciding whether or not we're even going to commit this, so I, Chief, if you didn't mind sharing your thoughts on things, I don't know, I don't have an exact pointed question, but obviously this legislation came down from us, I was curious if you, if it was discussed with you guys?
Yeah, so I became aware of the legislation when Councilwoman Cosmo, Testa, sorry, yes, no. When Councilwoman Testa messaged me last week saying that she's submitting the legislation as written. So, prior to that, I had no knowledge of this, and I actually put together a couple things.
It wasn't sent out, just for clarification, you got it before it was even sent out.
Okay, yeah.
So I did not, nobody knew about this legislation, I sent it to you, you gave me your recommendation, and what you thought was right, and then it was sent out. So nobody, nobody got this information prior to any day.
What was the recommendation?
Excuse me?
What was the recommendation from the chief?
The recommendation said that, what was originally, the legislation was incorrect.
Right, I thought we had already told people.
It was actually down from eighty-nine office, eighty-nine firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs, and that was one of the things that he clarified in that legislation, and I said that was totally understandable.
Yeah.
That was a misnomer on my part, that was corrected through our clerk's office before it was sent out, and then he just gave a few tidbits on what he thought was necessary, and it was nothing that was going to change my opinion on whether or not the legislation was.
Right, his, his opinion was actually the opposite of what you.
It doesn't matter, Jim, they have a.
Well, no, I mean, you're glossing over.
I'm asking what their opinion is.
But there's no difference, the legislation was taken again.
I have a whole review of all of them. Also, giving the Assistant Chief's civil service job description.
And just for clarification purposes, when this council got this legislation, it was specifically just to eliminate the Assistant Chief's position, to add a Fire Marshal's position. With that said, in the memo that we got, it went into a lot further detail, and I think that that, that got out of my hand, and into the further discussion of where this, this actual legislation's going to go, and to why it's actually going into committee, based on the memo that we did receive from, from the administration and the city attorney.
So, um, we got two pieces here, and I'll just read this letter. Honorable members of the Common Council, writing respectfully urge you to support the retention of the Assistant Fire Chief position within the Utica Fire Department. Their city continues to grow and face increasingly complex public safety demands, maintaining strong leadership within our department, it's not just beneficial, it's essential. Assistant Fire Chief plays a critical role to ensure in the day-to-day operational efficiency of our department. This position provides vital leadership oversight in key areas such as emergency response, coordination, firefighter training, personnel management, and inter-agency collaboration. In a city like Utica with high call volumes, a diverse emergency situations, a large population density, which, believe it or not, according to United States Census, we are a dense urban area, the value of this position cannot be overstated. Removing or leaving this role unfilled would place undue strain on the chief's position and could negatively impact our department's ability to maintain its high standards of service and safety. Additionally, the fire, Assistant Fire Chief is instrumental in strategic planning, budget preparation, community outreach, and ensuring compliance with state and federal regulations. Beyond the administrative and operational benefits, this role ensures continuity of command during major incidents, and serves as a critical mentor to the next generation of department leaders. Retaining this position. Retaining this position supports both immediate public safety needs and long-term organizational strength. I respectfully request that the council prioritize the safety of our community by ensuring that the Assistant Fire Chief position remains funded and supported within the Utica Fire Department. Your decision will directly impact not only the well-being of our firefighters, but also the residents, businesses, and visitors who rely on their protection every day." I've included a variety of examples of the duties that I delegate to the position, because as the Fire Chief, one of my main jobs is to make sure that everything's being done, uh, throughout the divisions of the Fire Department, and, uh, so by doing that, exercising leadership, I have to delegate responsibilities on a daily basis. Enhanced leader structure, urban departments often face complex challenges requiring a clear and tiered command structure, the Assistant Chief provides critical leadership support to manage multiple stations, shifts, and specialized teams. Operational oversight that have high call volumes, urban departments typically respond to a high volume of fire EMS and tactical rescue calls. Last year alone, we responded to over sixteen thousand eight hundred calls for service within the city. Uh, Assistant Chief helps ensure operational efficiency, resource allocation, and consistent incident command coverage. Division management, so we have several divisions within the Fire Department. If you look over to the, uh, the Assistant Fire Chief civil service job description, you'll see a bunch of those descriptions added in there, which also includes the, uh, the Division of Fire Prevention as well. Large departments, divisions like operations, EMS, training, fire prevention, special operations require full-time oversight. Assistant Fire Chief can be assigned to manage one or more of these divisions on a regular basis, improving specialization and accountability. Command support during major incidents, uh, urban environments are more likely to experience high-rise fires, hazards, materials incidents, and mass casualty incidents, and large-scale emergencies, and Assistant Chief helps ensure additional command presence and coordination in these complex situations. Strategic planning and inter-agency coordination with multiple agencies often involved in emergency response, police, EMS, public works. Assistant Chief plays a key role in planning, inter-departmental collaboration, and emergency preparedness. Personnel, personnel and labor relations. We have a sizable workforce, we often interact with unions, our, uh, employee organization helps support the Fire Chief in managing staffing, addressing personnel issues, and ensuring compliance with labor agreements. Training and standards compliance, urban departments must maintain high training standards and certifications across various disciplines. The AC oversees development, enforcement of training programs to meet NFA, OSHA, and local standards. Administrative budgetary support, larger budgets, more equipment facilities to manage, the Assistant Chief helps with capital planning, purchasing, man, grant management, and policy implementation. Community engagement and public education. We are a diverse community, the Assistant Chief supports outreach efforts, community risk reduction initiatives, and public education programs. We also work on succession plan and leadership development. Try to ensure continuity in leadership is critical in this, in the Fire Department, and, uh, we look to the Assistant Chief to assist me in administering this Fire Department on a day-to-day basis. With all that being said, Assistant Chief plays a critical role in the day-to-day operations of the Fire Department. You know what? As a firefighter, and a lieutenant, and a captain, as a deputy chief, I had to do those jobs to understand the job that I was in. And you truly don't understand these jobs until you hold them, and, uh, I only held the Assistant Chief's job for a short time, but during that time, there was a lot of treading water, just trying to keep above water, and as my time as the Fire Chief, I've had, uh, a lot of challenges, um, and, uh, you know, one of the, the, the most important choices that I had to make was who I picked to be my Assistant Chief, and, uh, I looked at Jim to, uh, help shore me up on areas that I am weak at, and help him, uh, develop as a leader, but make sure that we take care of the organization as a whole, because if we take care of the organization, we're going to be able to ta, help take care of the city. And, uh, you know, Jim has played a critical role in supporting, uh, initiatives, and I rely on, on, uh, day-to-day operational, uh, issues, personnel management, and quite frankly, uh, you know, uh, the job of Assistant Chief, with Jim there or any other candidate is invaluable to the office of the Fire Chief, and as being the only day-to-day people. So, the Fire Department, ninety-two percent of the Fire Department is assigned to the operations side of the house, so that means a hundred and twenty-one personnel are assigned to go to calls. The Fire Department operates on a day-to-day basis with eight personnel, one of which is assigned as mechanic. So, truly, day-to-day, our day-to-day Fire Department operations really comes down to seven people. It's a pretty lean organization already. I have four deputy chiefs. The removal of Assistant Chief would effectively take wait a second in command, and we would have no one to go to when I take vacation day, when there are, uh, multiple incidents going on, if I have to, uh, go to a training or something. I rely on that, on the Assistant Chief's position to shore up what I do. I can't make it to every meeting, I can't make it to every incident, but, you know, I can delegate some of that authority, and the Assistant Chief is, uh, uh, stuffed up to that challenge in that role.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? I just, this is going to go into committee, uh, we agreed on it, but the only thing that I want to add to it, and, uh, being a commander in the military, and I know Councilman Williamson here, uh, we agreed last, last month, when it comes to chain of command, uh, with the police force, one of the many things everybody was talking about is that the commander or the chief should be able to pick the people that are working underneath him. And, uh, so, um, I understand the importance of this, and that's why we did this for the, the Police Department last month, we, uh, we gave the, the chief, uh, his ability to, to, um, name his chain of command and pick the people that he wanted to, and I think so, like, you know, like we did for the police, I think, uh, in turn, I think it's important we do this for the Fire Department as well. Thank you.
Yes, um, so, in my opinion on this, it's going in committee, by no means does that mean I support it, I want to discuss it. However, my biggest problem before we even discuss this, we need to discuss the letter that the mayor sent us, because I was on the council in twenty-one, when the so-called contract was signed upstairs, I know it went to E and A, I never knew anything about it, okay? I'm very, very concerned about the wording in that contract. I know, and I've asked up some questions, that the, three things that we control here as the council are the police complement, the fire complement, and the DPW complement. No, I don't even think, it is not DPW complement, it's fire and police, okay? And so, I, I don't, the wording that is in that contract that was signed, okay, I know the police, the police have a, now, you two guys have a union, you're in a union?
Correct.
If there's a union, which one of yous is the union steward? Is there one that's a union steward? Do you guys have an account that you pay union dues that go someplace? Because I know the police do. Okay, that's my only problem, and to think that, and I have no intention, I have no intention of removing the, the, uh, I want to hear what you guys say, like we hear. When I got that letter yesterday, telling me that we can't do that, and if we do do it, we're going to have to replace seventy-five fire, okay, seventy-five firemen?
He's seven.
Or whatever they said, okay, was an outrageous number, okay? The wording, the police contract, doesn't have anything to do with that wording. So before we even discuss this legislation, we need to discuss what's right and what's wrong, because from what I'm understanding, we still control the complement of the Fire Department. And like I said, I hope you understand that, because originally, I wanted to have a meeting, I want to talk about it, I want to see what's going on, and quite frankly, all of us sat at this table the last month, and we know how, how serious of an issue we have in this city going forward. And believe me, I wish the police, the fire, and everybody together works with the administration and comes up with a solution, because the next two years are, is not going to be pretty for, for public safety. I support public safety, I've always had from day one, and I will continue, but we're going down a slippery slope, so we need to work things out all the way around, and that's, that's my biggest issue with that letter. And I want to know, we have no, uh, the judge is sick, um, the city attorney's not here, the way they're telling me that we can't do that is not the way to understand that I'm, it's explained to me. So that's, I just want you guys to know that. Thanks.
Thank you.
And I just, I'm going to vote for this to go into committee, just so we can discuss what Councilman Beatrice just said in depth. As this legislation stands, I have no interest in it, I just want it on record, sometimes people think we're talking about things on the floor like they're serious. This is not, this cannot possibly, I can't believe you have to come in here and sit here and defend why you need an Assistant Chief to the chief, I'm so sorry. Uh, I find this to be political theater dressed up as legislation, but everything Councilman Beatrice just said does concern me, and I do want to talk about that more. As far as removing an Assistant Chief, though, that is not my support, but I will be introducing it, or voting for it to go into committee tonight. That's all I have to say.
Any other questions?
The only thing that I want to state for the record is that, at, at the time this council cut positions back in two thousand twelve, it wasn't political theater, okay? And a deputy chief was caught from the Police Department, which left them with one. There's been a number of things that have happened with this council throughout the years that hasn't been political rhetoric, so before anybody starts that nonsense, this is, this is put in specifically for plenty of reasons, and it's not political theater. So, that's all I've got to say, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Kind of very odd coming from the most political person here.
No other questions? I'll make, I want to thank you for coming, and, uh, make the, like to hear a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Thank you.
I'll go.
[Crosstalk]
Ayala, Burmester, Bitar, Carcon, Irvin, Beatrice, Williamson, Klosm, Testa, Lamentico, Geruzzi, all present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for the deceased members of the common council.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion and a second to dispense the reading of minutes from the previous meeting?
They know. They're working.
Okay, we have a public comment period, allows three minutes per speaker. Our first speaker is Louis Cortez. Hi Louis, common council has provided you a copy of section 3244, public comment period. Are you in agreement?
Yeah.
Please state your name.
Louis Cortez.
Thank you Louis.
Well, here I am tonight, probably I'm getting familiar with you guys. This is the third time I'm here, making a complaint for, for a dog. But that's not the reason tonight why I'm here. I got some reports, this is just for this month, and I get to find out how easy it is for some people to make a phone call and talk to the head of the animal control department, so he can send an officer for my property complaining why I record this dog. It took me, and I never got a call back from such of a, this person. But how easy it is for some others, you know, just make a phone call, and just, you know, right there, send an officer to my property. So, a little bit disappointed, disgusted, I mean how there is some corruption going on in this city? Why we allow all this? And even on this report, I'm not lying, because the report is right here, name is there, and this person said he's got a, his lawyer, and his lawyer works for and this person said he's got his lawyer, and his lawyer works for corporation council department. That's so ridiculous. I mean, all I can tell you here, something needs to be done, okay? So, this don't continue happening. I mean, otherwise I'm gonna keep coming back, you guys do no problem, wanna see me every two weeks. Today I had to take the day off so I can be here, you know, to get the reports and, you know, spend time to communicate, I mean, you guys know where, but some may know, I mean, it's pretty disappointing, it's pretty disappointing. This shouldn't happen. I mean, this is abusive, it's corruption, okay? Somebody told me that, yeah, you are suing the city, I'm not suing the city, I'm, that's not my intention. All I ask is for my rights to be respected, okay? There is no money involved. Corporation council has my name, UPD has my name, I mean, why? Because I just complained about my my rights to be respected, not to be violated. So, I hope something is done about it, I'm gonna wait until somebody wants to talk to me later today, I'm not gonna leave, if, right? But, once again, this shouldn't happen in the city of Utica. Thank you.
Thank you Louis. Next speaker is Deb Griffin. Hi Deb, common council, how are you?
How are you?
Good seeing you.
You too.
Common councils provided you a copy of section three two forty-four public comment period, in agreement?
Yes.
Just state your name, please.
Deb Griffin?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Hello, thank you for your time this evening. In talking to a few people before I came up here, I found out that there isn't really anything in the works, but when I read this, you'll understand what prompted us to come tonight. So, I'm here on behalf of Lasik Optical, Nichols Jewelers, and Griffins Pub and Grill. On Friday, we were made aware that councilperson Ayello was on the talk of the town and indicated parking meters are being installed downtown. Prior to this, we had no knowledge of this decision, which councilperson Ayello also said on the air that we were against it. We as business and property owners have not been contacted or included in any of the details pertaining to these meters. Ed Lasik and I left a message for councilperson Ayello, she has chosen not to return our call as of today. As long-term stakeholders in the downtown area, we believe we are entitled to be part of the discussion and the decisions that are being made. Lastly, if limiting the volume of downtown parking is one of the goals to installing the parking meters, can someone answer as to why we stopped enforcing ninety-minute parking? Thank you.
Thank you Deb. Francis, common council's provided you a copy of section three two forty-four public comment period, in agreement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just don't mind the very beginning, alright?
Yeah, just state your first name, that's it.
My name is Francis Brown.
Thank you.
Corruption, what is the first thing that popped in your mind? Dirty money changing hands? Nope, I'm talking about who you know and how to manipulate them into doing your doings. I have learned the hard way, almost at the cost of my life, that our local government can be deceived in doing due to someone's status. Last I checked, laws, local ordinance, and most important of all, our constitutions, were established to protect all citizens of the fine city of Utica. I am again before you because our local government officials will not enforce, sorry, will not enforce the building code and regulations at my residence. My landlord keeps lying to them and not taking my video evidence into account. Why? His status. My landlord has been abusing my disability from day one, more details can be found on my Facebook page, Francis Brown. I also do not appreciate certain Utica police officers lying to me saying that our local district attorney does not prosecute unlawful evictions. I had a chat with him myself this afternoon. He said with certain factors that come into play, he will prosecute. All the lies, stress, and corruptions literally put me on the edge. Therefore, I would like to thank certain officers of Utica Police Department, including Officer Ware, Gil, and Will Scum, for helping me through this time. It wasn't for their worst scales, I probably wouldn't be here to make this speech today. Thank you very much.
Thank you Francis. There is no common council guest speaker, we have communications from the mayor, this is from Mayor Golemy. It has come to the administration's attention that one of the members of the common council seeks to eliminate the position of assistant fire chief, and that that legislation has been proposed to accomplish the same. Is the office understanding that the purported purpose of the elimination of this position is to address understaffing in the office of fire prevention, which has allegedly caused assignments, services to not be completed? The administration disagrees with this assessment. The members of the Utica Fire Department, Utica Professional Firefighters Local Thirty Two has a collective bargaining agreement, however, both the chief and assistant fire chief have their own separate collective bargaining agreement. The Fire Administrative Chiefs Association collective bargaining agreement, which was duly approved by the Board of Estimate and Appointment on June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one for a term of five years consists only of the fire chief and the assistant fire chief. Pursuant to the collective bargaining agreement, no possessions covered by this agreement should be abolished so long as any of the following conditions exist. One, the position is currently occupied. Two, the city operates an ambulance service. Three, the fire department complement exceeds seventy-five members. Therefore, the position of assistant fire chief cannot be abolished unless all of the following conditions are satisfied. One, the position is vacant. Two, the city abolishes the ambulance service. Three, the city reduces the fire complement to seventy-five members. In other words, each of these conditions should need are to occur. First, simultaneously, first, the position of the assistant fire chief is filled. Second, the city currently operates the ambulance service, and there is no evidence to support that the city seeks to abolish said service. Lastly, the total complement of the fire department is a hundred and thirty-two members, which is well above the seventy-five members. Should the common council seek to abolish the position of assistant fire chief, then the council must decrease the complement from one thirty-two to seventy-five members, therefore eliminating fifty-seven positions. The city would also need to abolish the ambulance service, further a vacancy would need to occur in the position of assistant fire chief. Nevertheless, even if such conditions did exist, oh, as none of these conditions are either met or highly likely, the common council cannot amend the fire complement to reduce the position of assistant fire chief to zero or otherwise abolish the position of assistant fire chief. Nevertheless, such, if such conditions did exist, it would be irresponsible to abolish the position of the assistant fire chief. The assistant fire chief assists in supervising all hundred and thirty members of the fire department. The assistant fire chief is also responsible for my rid of responsibilities, including but not limited to the duties set forth in the civil services job description. These duties cannot be transferred to another bargaining unit employee outside the agency. However, the administration would recommend amending the fire composition by eliminating the vacant position of the chief fire marshal and adding a second fire marshal. This amendment to the fire complement would maintain staffing levels in the office of fire prevention while transferring the administrative duties to the deputy fire chiefs. Unlike assistant fire chief, the vacant chief fire marshal supervises just one fire marshal and has limited responsibilities outside fire prevention. The addition of another fire marshal would assist in the duties required to be complement, to be completed by the office of fire prevention. The fire department currently has four deputy fire chiefs. As required by the civil service job description, the four deputy fire chiefs would be responsible for the daily oversight of the office of fire prevention. Please feel free to contact the mayor with any questions. Report of city officers, fire chief Angersall?
Nothing to report today.
Deputy chief Noonan?
Tomorrow evening at Utica Post two two-nine, they're gonna recognize our police officers of the year, just like extend an invitation to the council if they'd like to attend us at six-thirty at Utica Post two two-nine.
Thank you chief.
You don't want to say it. You don't, don't say it.
Yeah, I think they want to.
Brian Thomas, urban or no?
No report.
Chief Gentile?
I just wanted to make a note on the parking situation, you know, the administration is, you know, looking at a lot of avenues, collecting data, input, and outreach to business owners is definitely going to be a priority, but really looking at a system that can be put in place that is a long-term solution and something that we can utilize with both technology and making sure that the business owners and the people downtown are able to utilize our restaurants, our businesses to the best of the ability without parking being something that gets in the way, but also understanding that it is a valued revenue source and something that we should also utilize as well. But, the outreach is definitely going to be a part of that, the engineering department has been taking the lead, so it's, it's on its way and everybody will be considered. Also, just wanted to make a note, the resolution supporting the bed tax, that's the first step in making sure that we can get that in the hands of the assembly in the senate, and our local leaders can fight on our behalf, and we can start collecting that revenue as well and shifting the tax burden like we've, we've been talking about for a while. So, both of those things are, you know, just part of that bigger picture of shifting, shifting that, that burden that we've been talking about for a few months now, so, thank you.
Thank you chief. Marcus Phillips, commissioner of codes?
Nothing to report today, Mr. President.
Marcus Okolowski, commissioner of DPW?
Just that August thirteenth, we start green waste, so.
April.
Oh, April thirteenth, I'm already had, I think I was in Saratoga, sorry. And hopefully that means winter's over, and we will be out there, everybody should got the postcard, and you'll see us out there soon, April thirteenth.
Thank you. City engineer, Nick Brydenbecker?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. There is no cash report, petitions, remonstrations, appeals, we'll start with the first ward council member, KDL.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, I was listening with the public comment tonight, and I, I want to address a lot of it, but I do want to start with, I was not on the radio on Friday. I have talked about parking meters in the past, I don't know what mix-up there was with this, but I do know there are people generally against the idea of parking meters. Now, a lot of that conversation also comes from, at this point, there isn't an active plan from the administration, this is all very preliminary. So, a lot of the conversation is also, how can we be against something if we don't even know what the full plan is yet? And I, I believe the administration, when they say they're gonna take people on board and talk this out, your concerns are heard. I did get a call, I saw a voicemail late last night from Ed Lasik, I called him back before this meeting started tonight, and hopefully, I said I'm available to stop down tomorrow, so now that I know you're available also, the Griffins will stop down with you guys too. But I'm sorry for any miscommunication with that, but I understand the concern. It does come up a lot though, you know, we hear taxes are going up, people ask us, how can the city make more revenue? And that's where, when we bonded for parking meters years ago, this was in mind. So now, just bridging that gap of what works for everybody involved. So that's where we're at, and I'm glad you come out and you guys speak up and you let us know where we need to go next, so that will all be part of the conversation. But other than that, I just wanted to address those concerns, and we are here to listen, so thank you.
Thank you. Second district council member, Robert Burmester, majority leader?
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to thank everybody for coming, and I give nothing to pass.
Thank you Robert. Third district council member and president protep, Joseph Bitar?
Thank you, Mr. President, I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Fourth district council member, Frank Carcon. Fifth district council member, Venice Irvin.
Yeah, I'd like to just thank all of the department heads, Marcus Okolowski, Brian Thomas for coming to our last neighborhood meeting, and Chief of Staff Gentile was there too. I'm glad to see you all made it out alive, I was worried about you for a minute, but just thank you for coming, and thank all of you for everything you do.
Thank you. Sixth district council member, Joseph Beatrice?
Yeah, I just want to take a quick moment that recognize a year ago today, my mom passed, and I see pictures, it's very difficult, and I just want to say up there, I love you mom, and thanks for everything you did for me. Thank you.
Thank you council member. Council member at large and minority leader, Mark Williamson?
I have nothing to pass tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Council member at large, Samantha Calissimo Testa?
Thank you, Mr. President. I hate to burden the council with any additional legislation, however, we're in the process of remodeling our fields for Little League, getting donations for paint, and that process is starting. I am going to be putting in a resolution tonight, it's actually to recognize the police and the fire department. We did paint the dugouts last year, blue and black, and red and green, but to have a more uniformed approach, it's gonna go back to the green and yellow for all the dugouts, and we decided as a board to actually, instead of painting the dugouts those colors, just put a plaque out outside of the dugouts to recognize the police and fire as, as every year that we do that in one of our ceremonies. So I will be putting in a resolution tonight, just to get a jumpstart on that, so hopefully we can get that started before, those signs done and completed before the start of the season. So, you'll be seeing a resolution tonight, I submitted it, just some miscommunication between myself and the deputy clerk. So he's, he's drafting that and getting that, so you'll see that, you'll see that tonight. Hopefully it can pass, it's a simple resolution, just requesting a sign. That's it, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully we can have a three-peat, Coach.
Yeah, absolutely. You never know.
Hopefully we can have a continuous win.
Council member at large, Jack Lamentico?
Thank you, Mr. President. During the budget negotiations, and in the end, we passed a resolution stating that this council and all the elected officials would not get a raise this year. We also passed one other, I think it was a charter revision that we also were not going to get a raise this year. And unfortunately, I heard at the last DNA meeting that the, the mayor is bringing this up again, and his intention is to give the elected officials a raise, and I hope this isn't the case. He's using a CPI, the northeast urban CPI, and he's stating that that's the reason that he should give us a raise, even though twice we asked him, we did not need a raise, concerned about the, the budget in itself and the three-point-one-four that we did, we would like to have made it even less, but he's using this northeast urban, and that's really not the case, because if you look at our. really not the case, because if you look at our charter, it says the increase shall be based on all urban consumer price index as computed from December 31st of the year, the prior year. If the index increases 3% or more, the increase in salary shall be increased by the percentage rate of the increase in the consumer price index, but not more than 6% in a single year. Well, if you take a look at the consumer index for the previous year, it's 2.9%. So, you know, I'm not going to want to make a big thing about this, Mayor, but we asked not to have a raise this year. Why you're forcing it down our throats, I really don't understand. Two votes unanimously by this council stating that we did not want a raise and we don't think we need a raise. So please, again, reconsider this so we don't have to take this up in a legal matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I'm not 100% sure. I've spoken to the mayor and I don't know about the raises, but I know he did indicate to me at one time, this is not our lifetime seat, so he is just going with the charter and, you know...
But just, I understand.
And that's all.
He's not going by what the charter says.
Yep, that's fine.
The charter says, and the all urban consumer price index. And I'm just, please, Mayor, don't let yourself look bad. And I think it hurts you to begin with that you asked for a 10% raise and we, or 9%, and we don't need it. And so we asked you twice not to give it and you're still pursuing it and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Legislation, we have a proposed ordinance number one. Where we're going to place this into committee, amending the composition of the Bureau of Fire.
Sure, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, put it in committee.
We have a second?
Do a second?
Yep. A motion to introduce proposed resolution number two?
Make a motion?
Second?
And motion to amend, to say a regular meeting on May 7th.
So we have a second?
Then we put that amendment on the date?
Yep, 5/7.
Yeah, so we have a resolution providing for a public carrying on a zoning amendment. Whereas common council proposed amendments to the zoning code concerning the site plan review process and the review requirements by various city departments, and whereas proposed amendments were referred to the planning board on March 25th, 2025 for a report thereon, whereas the city of Utica zoning ordinance requires that before any amendment supplement or change in the text, there should be a public notice and hearing. Whereas the city clerk should cause to be published a public hearing notice at least two times, not less than 10 days before the public hearing. Now therefore be it resolved that the Utican Common Council should conduct a public hearing on the proposed amendments at its regular meeting on May 2nd, 2020, May 7th, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the common council chambers, 1 Kennedy Plaza, Utica, New York, to provide the public with the opportunity to ask questions and offer comments on the proposed zoning text amendment. Immediately after the public hearing, the Utica Common Council may consider legislation that will amend the zoning ordinance concerning the site plan, review process, and the referral to the various city departments for required review. Votes, please?
Nine yeas adopted.
Have a motion to introduce proposed ordinance number three?
Motion.
Second?
Yeah. I mean, it's already...
They're going to get 90 if they're going to pass this.
We need nine votes to pass this?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend. It should read, the planning board shall consult with its professional planning staff with regard to each site plan presented to it. In addition, the board shall consult with the Department of Public Works, the City Engineer, the Commissioner of Codes, the Stormwater Management Officer, and the city's Public Safety Department prior to the issuance of the final approval of any site plan review application. In addition, the board should forward to any representatives of federal, state, and county agencies as well as its designated private consultants.
Votes then on the amendment?
Mr. President, Brian wanted to speak, he's ahead of planning.
Well, you just, you can't adopt the ordinance until you hold a public hearing. You're just voting on the...
This is the amendment to it.
Second? For May 7th? Nine yeas to amend.
Can we have a motion, a second, to place it into committee?
Second.
Second.
Second. You're like 30 seconds too late. So you just got to make an amendment to that now, for it to state now there be further ordained on a motion by councilmember, Councilman Lamedico, seconded by councilmember Promaster, and unanimously approved by nine members of the council.
Is that the amendment? He wrote on that first.
Nine yeas to amend.
Mr. President, I'd like to pull resolution number four from committee.
Second.
Okay.
So...
I'll read it, Council?
No, you don't have to read it. I'd just like to make a motion before you actually read it into the floor. So I would like to make an amendment that says, it's corresponding financial analysis from the city assessor, comma, the Utica Industrial Development Agency, and the economic, excuse me.
What do you mean? I'm sorry. Which one are you on?
The last whereas.
Is this resolution number four?
Resolution number four. Yep. So it says a correspondent, corresponding financial analysis from the city assessor.
It's not in there.
No, I know, I'm making a motion. So it says the city assessor, comma...
Should be, should be comma, what's your...
Yeah, I know, I'm getting there. City assessor, comma, Economic Development Department, comma, Utica Industrial Development Agency, and the City Comptroller. I just got one more, Joe.
Have a second?
Wait, I'm not done. I got to make one more, I'm sorry. And then it says now there be it further resolved that the common council hereby directs the city assessor, comma, Economic Development Department, comma, Industrial Development Agency, and the city of Utica. So that's all you're adding is just the Utica Industrial Development Agency and the Economic Development Department to both of those lines.
And I'd like to continue along on a motion to amend, on the same motion, if I may. Make a motion here to strike universal from the title of the document along with the body of the document, instead of reading universal public safety fee, public safety fee. Also move to amend third whereas clause, introduce public safety fee to be levied, comma, so strike on all properties.
Can I get a second on these amendments?
It's fine, it's fine when he wants to strike universal.
No, I don't. Can I have your votes on these amendments, please?
Nine yeas amended.
You guys want to vote on this now? Yes, we're voting on this. Yep. Sorry, Councilman. No, it's okay. Votes, please? No, the second one.
Nine yeas adopted.
I'd like to make a motion to put ordinance amending section 2-2- what did I say? 2-2-169?
169, I think.
Just, it's going into committee, but just strike universal from all those before it goes into committee as well. Get a second on that?
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Vote on the amendment, strike universal.
Yeah. Can we vote on the amendment, strike in the universal, please?
Nine yeas amended.
Oh my God. It's been a long day. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pull resolution number seven out of committee.
I think we're on, I think we're on six.
I thought we just put resolution number six in. We didn't do that right now. We did that in the pre-meetings. Oh, okay. Yeah. So just a motion to commit.
Yeah, can we have a motion in a second to commit ordinance number six, please?
Thank you.
So seven, can we have a motion to introduce proposed resolution number seven?
No.
We already committed motion number, or ordinance number six, the E&amp;A transfer?
Yeah.
I actually don't mind voting on that tonight, as long as the following, they give us an addendum to this and then in the next component, or the following E&amp;A transfer that they put in, it's in that format that I gave to Chief of Staff Gentile. I don't mind voting on this.
Is that okay, voting on this?
I don't want to hold it up. I know it's got to be done.
That'll be good. So you guys want to vote on?
Yes, I'll make a motion to reconsider ordinance number six.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So E&amp;A transfer 2024-2025, your votes, please?
Nine yeas adopted.
Can I have a motion to introduce proposed resolution number seven?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd just still like to make one amendment to the actual resolution. On the be it resolves that the, it says the common council finds, I just wanted to read as the other resolves, it says the mayor of the city of Utica and the common council. So on each of those resolves, or be it resolved, just have it say the mayor of the city of Utica and the common council, so that it's uniformed in its reading for all of that.
Can I have a second and those votes, please?
One question before we pass this, the one thing that I have to ask, so Chief Gentile, maybe you can answer this for me. Is the county legis, the county involved in this at all with the bed tax? Would it be for redistribution?
No, it would be so the city of Utica has its own.
So the city of Utica has its own, separate from the county. Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't see that in the language.
We have a resolution requesting New York Assembly Member Mary Ann Buttonshine and State Senator Joseph Griffo to introduce home rule legislation to amend tax law to authorize the collection of an occupancy tax in the city of Utica. Can I have your votes, please?
Nine yeas adopted.
And then the last one is just the council, I would appreciate your support on it, it's only a resolution, but it's just, it's still on behalf of the council and the city of Utica, your support on this so that we can pass it tonight. It's a placement of an honorary dugout signs for UPD and UFD.
Second.
Yeah. So whereas the city of Utica prides itself on offering amenities and activities for its residents to enjoy throughout the year, whereas Utica Little League has enjoyed success due to hard work of not only the players and coaches, but the community that stands behind them as well. Whereas the Utica Police Department, Utica Fire Department have long been supporters and proud advocates for the boys and girls that participate in the league. And be it resolved that the city of Utica Common Council does hereby honor and recognize the Utica Police Department, Utica Fire Department by placing signs on the dugouts, thanking them for their support of youth sports, and be it further resolved that this resolution be inscribed in the minutes of the city of Utica Common Council meeting held on April 2nd, 2025. Votes, please?
Nine yeas adopted. Nine yeas adopted.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second on that? Thank you, Bob.